I am now calling the March 25, 2025, Meeting of Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the Whole to Order. In attendance are Councilmembers Stewart, online is Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Salah Houdin, in chambers is Council Vice President Forsyth and Council President Kritzer, and myself, presiding Officer, Councilmember Nueva Camina. Currently, Councilmember Anderson is not here, and if she does arrive late, I will make sure to announce her. Today's agenda, we've got a lot of items on the agenda. I believe that we've got seven, eight of them on there. However, with the new format, we do have it broken out to, the first, we're going to hear the three items that we have that are going to be going to consent. Then we've got some feedback to get us ready for a study session, and three items on for our informational. We are going to be taking up just about the whole amount of time, so I'm going to do a great job of keeping us on track. Let the record show that Councilmember Anderson is joining us. Now, the first item that we've got on the agenda is the approval of the Contract Amendment with Makers in the amount of $123,283 for capital facilities plan. And joining us today is Director Lorraine Hamilton.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Lorraine Hamilton, the Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm joined today by Cameron Zapata, our Senior Parks Planner, and she is going to be presenting this item, which is a Contract Amendment with Makers for our Capital Facilities Plan. I'd also like to briefly acknowledge our new Parks Planning Manager is joining us. Her name is Lindsay Falconberg, and so she is here to see how Committee of the Whole goes, but she will be up here with us as we move forward for a variety of items as well. So Cameron, you will present this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So this is the Amendment to an Existing Contract with Makers for the Capital Facilities Plan. The original contract was initiated following the completion of our Capital Facilities Condition Assessment last winter, and it was to align with the adoption of Redmond 2050 and our 20-year CIS update. And as part of the recent biennial budget, funds were approved as a one-time ask to develop a strategic plan to extend facility planning into 2050. This amendment is for an additional $123,000 to continue the development of the Capital Facilities Plan. And as a reminder, this plan serves as a functional roadmap for the future of our general government facilities, and this includes City Hall, Public Safety Building, the MOC, or fire stations, and recreation centers, and this is through 2050. Makers was selected non-competitively and having previously completed our 2019 Capital Facilities Plan. Their familiarity with Redmond's facilities has helped maintain the project momentum, ensuring a timing alignment with Redmond 2050, and then compliance with the State Growth Management Act, GMA, requirements. So far, Makers has conducted a kickoff meeting, staff interviews, site tours of most of our facilities, and next they'll analyze the gathered information and develop a long-term facilities plan. Makers will collaborate closely with the project team, which includes staff from park planning, facilities, and long-range planning, to draft and evaluate key decision options and recommendations. Additionally, they'll conduct at least three meetings with staff subject matter experts to share their findings and gather feedback. Once that's been completed, the draft Capital Facilities Plan will be presented to the Planning Commission before moving to City Council for a final decision. And if the Contract Amendment is not approved, the city will not have a GMA-compliant capital facilities element as part of Redmond 2050, our comprehensive plan. And this will impact the inclusion of projects in the city's CIS, or Capital Investment Strategy, and CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and will be unable to impose and collect impact fees on projects associated with growth. So the contract will be submitted to City Council for review and will request to be placed on the consent agenda for April 1st.
Cameron, thank you for using and explaining out the acronyms, because I know that a lot of times for the listening public that are listening in, they're like, what are all of that? So I appreciate that. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Zapata. I really appreciate the partnership that we've had so far with Makers, and this work has already proved really helpful and critical. I fully support moving this to consent on April 1st. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer.
Thank you, and I support moving this item forward. One question, in the scope, it talks about a visioning workshop that will occur, or kind of some visioning that's going to happen as part of the scope. Will there be any council engagement as part of that? I assume it's mostly a staff workshop, but just curious to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, the visioning workshop will mainly be with staff and the subject matter experts from fire, police, other subject matters throughout. We will, in addition to kind of the final adoption phase for the plan, come and give briefings to City Council, which will be an opportunity for you all to share feedback with us as well, as we share the feedback from staff and things like that. It'll be an opportunity for us to also have a conversation. So while there will be touchpoints kind of at the end of the process, we will be doing briefings along the way as well, so that we're receiving feedback from you in real time.
Great, thank you. And I will just note, yeah, I think this is great to move forward, and actually probably comes at just the right time as we are assessing the future of one of our facilities. I know we'll have more discussion on the Teen Center going forward, but the opportunity with this to kind of look at some different options for the long run, this might be a really helpful contract to have going on.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions, Counsel? Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, thank you. Director, I may have missed something. I read through the documents, and so this amendment is $123,000 in budget, correct?
Correct.
And what was, when was the last scope done, and what was that budget?
The budget was around $48,000, and that was completed at the end of last year. We executed that. We started work with Makers back in August of last year, but because we've had so much staffing turnover in parks, we were unable to execute until a little bit later in the year. But we were able to do staff kickoffs and things like that towards the end of the year.
So I'm assuming that there's nothing in the nature of the work that's changed, it's just that now you're going for the budget for the main part of the work? Is that how I would read it?
Yeah, that's accurate. In order to hit the timelines that we needed to with the Planning Commission and getting it adopted by the end of this year, we needed to try to initiate the work before the end of last year, so we could kind of get ourselves moving. And so we initiated that work late last year after the Facilities Condition Assessment was complete, so that we would be able to bring Makers up to speed, and then bring this, kind of the full Contract Amendment through Council.
Okay, and then just last question. Normally, I think I would see this, maybe not at City Redmond, but my expectations would be that this would have been listed as an option to the contract as opposed to an amendment. So I guess that's just me being rhetorical. That seems a little bit cleaner to me, is that you plan the first scope, and then you plan options to move forward as opposed to a Contract Amendment. But either way, it gets us there, so thank you.
Noted for the future, thank you.
Any further questions from the Council? Seeing none, any reason why we should not have this go forward to consent on April 1st?
Wonderful. Ms. Zapata, Director, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next action item that we have that is requesting consent for April 1st is a warning bid to Alpha Developers LLC of Seattle for the Fire Station 17 Siding Replacement Project, and with us is Deputy Director Vanji Garcia. Mr. Steve Gibbs is joining us as well. And would this be Mr. John Mork, Project Manager? No. Eric Dawson, thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. This is again for the Fire Station 17 Siding Replacement that we've discussed before. Public Works is asking to award the construction contract and for an increase in total funding.
Thank you, Counsel. So again, Steve Gibbs with Capital Construction. We're looking to award this contract on consent at the April 1st meeting, and then also increase the budget to the 1.299620. And I've got Senior Project Manager John Mork is online, and also backed by popular demand is Mr. Dawson to handle any questions.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. It's been a while since we last saw this project, so I just wanted to clarify the last item. We moved forward on this was the design consultant, and this is for the construction. So first question, do we anticipate this siding replacement project to take place in the upcoming dry season? Is it going to be completed this year?
Yes. It's about a 12 to 14 weekly time to get the material, and then they'll proceed immediately with construction.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, I just would love to hear a little bit more about, we have known about the cost increase, but this particular memo before us states that the extra costs can be covered with other project savings as well as year-end fund balances. I'm just flagging that because the Council, we have not yet reviewed end-fund balances from the prior biennium. That's coming soon. But is there anything more specific you can share with us about where those extra dollars are intending to come from? I'm a little nervous to, you know, commit a piece of some amount of dollars that we haven't yet fully studied.
Sure. So really, with the bids that came in a little high, it's basically ate up the entire budget, and this would be to reestablish contingency. I did work with finance on, you know, scrounging the cupboard to find some extra dollars to cover this contingency. We might not need it, but with our history with facility projects, we want to make sure we have some. But I do not have the specific saving, project saving that they came up with.
Okay, I would be fine moving this item to consent if we could get a little bit more detail via email between now and then. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, do we have any reason why this should not go to consent on April 1st? Seeing none, we will see you back on April 1st. Thank you. Moving on to the third action item that is going up for consent on April 1st is to approve the consultant agreement with OAC Services for the Maintenance and Operations Center, otherwise known as MOC, Campus Redevelopment Project. And staying with us is Director Vanji Garcia, Mr. Steve Gibbs, and Mr. Dawson, are you staying with us as well? Well, wonderful.
We're the same team for both items. And just to remind Counsel, a few weeks ago, we did a little summary of the design-build process, and we had our, the contract for this moving forward is who the contract is for, to be our owner's representative that's helping us move through the progressive design-build process. This item is also requesting authorization to negotiate and acquire property rights for the project if needed.
So we definitely think progressive design-build is the correct choice for this project, but as we noted a few weeks ago, this is new to the city. We're not experts in this. OAC is a recognized expert in this field, in the industry. They've taken 40 public clients through their first-ever alternative delivery project, so we feel they are definitely the right owner's rep for us. They play a big role throughout this project. For starters, they help us select the design-build team. Actually, first of all, they're helping us go to the state to get approval to use progressive design-build, and they help us select the design-build team, and then they're with us all along the way to work with the design-build team as we develop the design, negotiate the final price, and then they will also assist us with managing and inspecting the construction when that happens down the line. So this is a big consultant, it's a big source of help for us. What we're asking to do today is to get approval for the entire contract. However, staff's intent is we're going to release this contract to this consultant in phases. One of the things about design-build is we don't exactly know what direction the design-builder might want to take us, and certainly we weigh in on that as it goes, but we don't know that right now. So some of the phases can change, some of the individual parts of the things can change. So we're going to continue to work with them and release funds as they go along through the different phases of the project.
Counsel Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So the Redmond Senior Community Center was designed-bid-build, correct? And this is also designed?
It was GCCM.
GCCM, that's right. Okay. All right. That was the main differentiation that I wanted to have the distinction of. Thanks.
Qualifying question on GGCM. Can you expand on what that acronym stands for for our listeners?
General Contractor Construction Manager.
Thank you.
Counsel President.
So it was really helpful to be able to hear from OAC Services at the study session, and so I'm feeling pretty good about working with them on this contract, and appreciated getting some of those questions answered. The piece around authorization to negotiate and acquire property rights, there's not a ton of detail in our materials about that, so I'm curious if you can speak more to that, and also what the actual approval would look like from Council.
It's actually to, just authorizing to negotiate, there's some easements that we're negotiating right now, or going discovering. There's adjacent properties, that is right there. So the intent is to approve that we can do this while we're doing the project. I just can't remember the companies that we're talking to right now.
Primarily, it's UPS. So we wouldn't, we don't have any plans to purchase any property at this point. If somebody came out of the woodwork with a magical piece of property that housed all our new needs at a very reasonable price, we would look at that. But right now, we're really looking at just easements with the neighbors of this process to possibly help our access issues. So one of the difficult parts right now is everybody accesses it off the main road. It creates circulation problems. If we had another access on the back of the property where UPS is, that would really help us out.
And would those, so those would be permanent easements, not just easements for the construction process?
Correct.
Okay. And so, yeah, I might have missed it. Was there more detail on what that would look like in terms of when you would come back to Council as you work on those easements?
Oh, we would be coming regularly. So what we're talking about now is from our first master plan. There was two interest points that this could happen. When the design builder comes on, it is there for you to really look at our plan, what can fit with the requirements that we've talked about right now. So it could look very similar, or it could be changed. But those two access points, because right now we know accessibility to the site is incredibly important, we wanted to put this out open, included in the contract, so the OAC can also help us move forward with decisions with that, too.
Okay. Yeah, I would love, I'm okay moving ahead. I think before we take the vote, I'd love a little bit more information on that, and also how it will appear in our consent agenda, that piece of it. Is it just going to be an additional kind of authorization motion that we would be making? But especially if we're going to be negotiating and acquiring property rights, certainly would like to be appraised and have that in writing of what we can expect in terms of updates on that.
Like specifics? Counselmember Fields.
Thank you. First thing is, I agree with Council President Kritzer on being included in the process, in the decision-making process when we get to property rights. But that's not my question. When was the MOC first initiated? How many years ago was that? Like a lot, right?
Yeah, I think original construction was in 1970.
Okay. So when, we touched on this a bit when the Parks Director made a presentation on facilities not that long ago, and the MOC was not included in sustainability, or that, you know, the focus of that particular study. And one of the questions, you know, and one of the questions I asked was, you know, why not? And the answer was, a good answer, it was that it's basically brand-new, and there's no necessarily any lessons learned from that perspective. However, I'm back, and what I would like to see in this design process is some point in time where you come back to Council with the change and the benefits associated with those changes, not from building a building, but building a new operational dynamic. There's going to be opportunities here to maximize new technology, maximize lessons learned, maximize, you know, our current status of the city as what we value, what we'd like to see. So I'm basically describing to you some version of a benefits realization plan that you come to Council and say, here's, after we invest this 200-and-some-one million dollars, we'll not just have a new building, but we will have, you know, this much better in our operational approach and efficiencies, et cetera, et cetera. Is that type of work planned for this vendor?
Absolutely. That's, so as we've started to kind of, a lot of design-build teams have already been reaching out to us to ask us, what's going to be important to you on this project? And one of the things we've noted for them is, first of all, we do want the groups at the MOC to, we want to make it easier for them to work together, to leverage each other's knowledge and practices. So by consolidating everybody in one building and giving them facilities, that makes that easier. We're going to bring that along. The other thing that we've noted is this is a fairly old facility. It's been built piece by piece. There wasn't really a dedicated master plan driving a lot of the development. And we know that there are new ways to maintain cities. There are new technologies out there. We want these design builders to include folks on their team that can come in and talk to us about these things and say, this is what you might want to change in the way you do your business practices, the way that you maintain the city. We want to leverage the current knowledge that's out there. So that's a big piece of what we're looking for from our partners on this project.
And I completely appreciate the approach you're taking, and I think it's fundamental to just good project management. My ask is that when we have a clear picture, or when you have a clear picture of, you know, a way to summarize for Council what those changes are going to look like, I would appreciate that being scheduled in as a schedule item at a point in time. And by the way, welcome back to the hot seat. Good to see you.
Thank you.
But that's it. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? So it sounds like tying some things up, some emails going back and forth, and then we will be seeing this back with the amendment on April 1st.
Wonderful, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is Feedback for Study Session, and we are going to be welcoming up Ms. Jenny Liebeck, and it's going to be going over, getting us ready for our Solar Plus Energy Storage Feasibility Study Overview. Welcome, Ms. Liebeck.
Thank you. So the city recently completed a grant-funded solar and energy storage feasibility study. And so the goal of that study was to understand whether any of our critical facilities, we specifically looked at four, whether they might be good candidates for solar and battery storage, and then key design features and technologies we should be looking at for future projects. So this was our first foray into this topic, and we're really excited to be sharing some of those key findings with you during the study session on April 8th. And so today, I'm just looking for direction or on any questions or topics you want to make sure that we hit on during that presentation.
Counsel, questions, concerns? Counselmember Stewart.
Thanks. I have three questions for the study session. And first, just want to acknowledge that the data for this was collected in 2023. So a couple things in our city and our plans have changed since then, and so incorporating that is helpful here. So my first question is, actually, I'm really glad that Deputy Director Garcia is still here from Public Works. So what learnings from these four buildings inform design choices when we get to the MOC? One of the big takeaways from all the recent facility scans is how important it is for this Council to invest in a building that is going to be, it's going to live up to our dreams for the future and not become a burden on future councils to continually retrofit. So I'd like to see a response to the recommendations specifically listed on Page 30 and 31 of this report as to whether or not those items are being considered for the design of the MOC. For the buildings that are included, my second question is, it doesn't look like the consultants had necessarily all the information they would have liked about the EOC here at City Hall. So if we could see a response to that, it was mentioned kind of in three parts throughout the report, and my question is, did we not give them the data to analyze, or did we not fully know the requirements of the EOC? And do we have kind of updated thinking on that? And my third question is, it looks like the opportunity to put a solar array on top of the parking garage was considered, but not the energy consumption of the garage, which has changed significantly, as we know with the growth of our EV fleet. So how can we further study the impact of an array to power the fleet, or how are you thinking about that? And as the report mentions, actually, the fleet we have chosen is in itself a fleet of batteries with wheels. So how you're thinking about interpreting those results would be helpful. Thank you.
Wonderful. Further questions from the Council to get us ready for our study session on the 8th? Well, looking like thumbs up, I had one, and Counselmember Stewart already mentioned it, so we're good to go. We'll see you in April. Thank you, Ms. Liebeck. And Counsel, the next three items are going to be informational only. The first one that we've got is always a fun one, and that is our Dog Park Update. And joining us back is Director, I almost called you Dr. Lorraine Hamilton.
You know what, I'll take it.
Director Lorraine Hamilton.
Good afternoon, Counsel. So there was a mistake actually in the agenda, so just for your information, the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability and Vegetation Management Plan Update is actually preparation for a study session. And so just to note that, as we move through these next three items, I'm joined this afternoon by Darcy Rayner-Shepard, who is our Park Operations Manager, and she is going to take care of our Dog Park Update for you today.
Thank you, Counsel. Dog parks were identified in the 2017 and 2022 park plans and were prioritized in the 2324 budget with our first pop-up dog park installations at both Luke McCredman and Hartman Parks. For the 25 and 26 budget, a permanent dog park was prioritized, and for 2025, we will be focusing on planning and design of the permanent amenity, and we'll do pop-up dog parks at Luke McCredman's and Hartman, again, to serve the community during this design phase. And the goal is to install the permanent amenity in 2026, although there may be impacts from the King County Trunk Line project that do impact Luke McCredman Parks. We are still working on getting more confirmation on the timeline for that project. And we will continue popping up parks until that permanent installation can be installed. Are there any questions?
Counsel? Counsel President Kritzer.
Just a clarification on the King County Trunk Line project. So you're saying that you won't actually go to the permanent one until after that project is completed?
Potentially. So what we were trying to avoid is installing a permanent amenity to then have to rip part of it out and then reinstall it after the completion of that project. So we're waiting for confirmation on timing, and then we'll have to weigh the options of installing a permanent amenity, if it's going to be years and years, or is it happening in one year? Maybe we want to wait and do pop-ups until they're finished in the park.
And something that most people don't realize, because I didn't actually realize this until we were discussing this issue, is that Luke McCredman, a portion of it is actually King County land. So that whole grassy area is not actually city land. There is a portion of it that's county land, and we have a good, sorry, excuse me, relationship with King County, and so, you know, work with them to maintain it and all of and so, you know, work with them to maintain it and all of those things. And yet, if we're going to install a permanent amenity, need to go through the proper steps of easements and agreements with them to ensure that if we are on their land, we're not impacting anything, and understanding what of that piece of property they're going to need for staging for the trunk line project may impact it as well. The decision may also be made, as we discussed with King County, that we keep our permanent dog park amenity on just city land, but it will impact the footprint quite a bit. So little-known fact about Luke McCredman is that part of the grass belongs to King County. So it does make it a little more complicated.
That's helpful. And I know we've been waiting for when that project is actually going to happen for a long time on the trunk line project. I think since I came on council, they've been saying, we're going to come and do it, and we're going to block everything. So.
And that's why Redmond Lights hasn't quite come back to campus either, is because we're also waiting for that project.
Yeah, I will ask, so you're saying that maybe we would end up shifting, if it ended up that way, to Hartman Park or to a different location?
It would be more likely that we'll delay the permanent installation, but we will continue each season, each year, popping up the temporary, because we have the fencing and we have the staffing to continue to. So there will be an amenity. The permanent one may be delayed. We're still waiting to understand that project and its impacts.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Yes, so I actually was very much aware of that boundary line. And for the community, the pop-up park has always been on the Redmond portion. If we were to make it larger, it would encroach then into the King County portion. So my question is around the trunk line project. I know there's some staging happening on the other side of the road, just to the north of that area. I don't know if that's staging for King County trunk line project. I know initially, they were looking to stage in that grassy area for Luke McCredman.
Yeah, so those are the questions we haven't gotten clarity on, that we've been continually, we've met with them, and there is not, I don't know that all of that has been fully communicated as of yet.
Got it. I would just put in a nod for the staging area that is just to the north across, what is it, 85th there, and have Luke McCredman be still available for our community members to use, if at all possible.
To be clear, there's no intention for us to allow them to use all of Luke McCredman for staging, just the portion that does belong to them.
That makes sense.
Yeah, thanks.
Council, any further questions on this?
Seeing none. Director Hamilton, I want to, thanks, I had heard a lot of feedback from the cross-country team for the temporary park at Hartman last year, and there were some concerns about season. So I was glad to hear that we've got that worked out, so that there'll be no worry for that. So that was wonderful. And I'm really looking forward to when we do work towards getting that permanent dog park in there, hearing from some of the residents about finally having a space for small and anxious dogs, and also one for just large breeds as well. So very excited about that. So thank you.
Moving on to our next agenda item is the Tree Mitigation Update. And Director Hamilton is going to be staying with us. Darcy is as well as Mr. Tuchek joining us today. Well, come on. Thank you, Mr. Tuchek. Good to see you. Welcome. I mean, how can we be talking about trees without you?
Dave and Tree is Anonymous. So this item will be presented again by Darcy Rayner Shepherd, our Park Operations Manager.
Thank you, council. So during the 2324 budget, the city completed a comprehensive tree health risk assessment of approximately 18,000 trees in parks, right-of-ways, open spaces, street trees, and this is all to ensure public safety while preserving our urban forest. Assessments were focused on the criteria of a trunk diameter of 12 inches or greater, located within striking distance of targets, near streets, buildings, parking spaces, or structures. 211 trees were identified and prioritized as needing mitigation, and mitigation can be in the form of pruning and limbing, wildlife snag creation and tree removals. And work so far includes Phase 1 mitigation work on 35 of the highest priority trees was completed in 2024. Phase 2 mitigation will happen in 2025 on the next 50 to 60 highest priority trees, and that RFP process closes on April 2nd. And then Phase 3 will see additional mitigation in 2026. And this work helps us protect both people and property while maintaining the ecological benefits that our trees provide, including wildlife habitat and urban canopy coverage. Are there any questions?
Council. Council Vice President Forsyth will start us off.
Thank you. Of those 211, how many are actually slated for removal? This is why we called you to the table, Mr. Tuchek.
Yeah, so I would say it's actually probably pretty close to a third for each category there. So snagging, pruning, and then removal.
What exactly is wildlife snagging?
It's where you take a tree that is dead but does not have a hazard of striking if cut below a certain feet, typically about 20 feet tall, but it can be less or more if there's not targets. And it's allowed to stay standing and decay and become habitat for animals.
Great. Good to know. Thanks.
Council Vice, Council President Kritzer, and then Councilmember Stewart? Did you have your hand up? Okay.
Thanks for the work on this, even though I think at our last meeting, I was like, no taking out trees. In this case, it's really great for us to think about what are the unhealthy trees, and how do we make sure that we're keeping our community at lowest risk for things like, you know, urban wildfire or other types of things. So, well, also, and then making sure that our existing trees can be healthy and thrive. So, you know, just wanted to kind of put that on the record. And curious if there's going to be any sort of messaging going out to the public to explain as they see any sort of these removals happening, what they're seeing, that this is actually for the health of our trees?
Yes, great question. Thank you. We do actually have a website that we can direct people to that explains kind of this whole process and the tree mitigation plan. And then we also, last year, and we'll do again this year, a social media campaign, just to let people know what's happening, the different forms of mitigation that we do, the pruning, limbing, wildlife snag and removal, just so if they see vehicles and crews at work, they'll know what's happening. And I believe that last year as well, if there were any that were really visible by residents, we did some targeted outreach as well. So if there were, if there was a tree, for example, coming down kind of behind a row of houses, we tried to do some information sharing of like, hey, this is the city. We are doing this work. Here's where you can get more information and get some questions answered. So as Darcy mentioned, a lot of these are kind of in more wilded areas of our city. They're not the well-maintained trees you see. They tend to be in the areas that have been less well-maintained, and so they aren't necessarily as visible to people. But when they have been visible, we're making sure that we're doing targeted outreach so people can get their questions answered.
Council, do we have any additional questions or any follow-ups? Councilmember Fields?
Yes, thank you. Director, I'm wondering if you or anyone have had a chance to understand why the public tends to not trust the city when it comes to tree removals. Do we have a, like, when there is a vested interest, like a commercial property or something, are we transparent? Do we say that, you know, that those are the drivers here? Like, as councilmembers have said, this is, overall, the main purpose is to maintain a healthy canopy, maintain, you know, our tree environment. So in general, it's all driven by what we believe is to be the public good. But in the years that I've been on council, there's always a pretty high suspicion, or skepticism, I should say, about why we take trees down. And maybe, Dave, you have more experience with that, I believe. So anybody, if you think that's a question that can be answered, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm happy to share what, where my expertise lies on this. I'm not in the planning and community development side of this. And so perhaps in the future, Director Helen would be the better person to share a little more. And I do believe that we're coming later this year to share a larger tree canopy update with City Council. We're working on getting that on the calendar. So I do think that we can absolutely speak to that. I think that part of that skepticism or uncertainty comes from, in part, that we don't always do the best job telling the story of the trees we are planting and the work that we are doing. So I think it's really visible when trees are coming out. It is not really visible when we go plant 100 trees in heron rickery. People don't see that work as visibly, and sometimes we have not always done the best job pushing that story out, the work of Green Redmond, the work of Tree Canopy Team. And so I'm really excited this year because approved in the last budget was the Green Redmond and Volunteer Coordinator. Her name is Maya Clem. She joined us just a month ago. I have a new Parks Planning Manager who has done really good work with earthcore and sustainability work in the past. We also have a Civic Spark onboard with us right now. His name is Josiah. He's going to come give a tree giveaway update, and we're going to be doing a tree giveaway this fall. And so one of my goals, as we bring all of this work on and continue to do this great work with new staff and new vigor, is to do a better job of telling that story, because there is tree canopy work happening. And so I think when the community is not hearing the good work of tree canopy work that we're doing, but they're seeing large trees come down, there's a disconnect of they're not seeing the trees coming back in. And so I think that that is something that we need to do a better job of, of telling that story, because I do think there's really great work happening within trees for the good of the community. And I'm looking forward to having staff really passionate about that work and working across the city with our partners in Public Works and Planning to tell that story a little more comprehensively in the future.
Thank you, and I agree with you. One of the things that might help in that story is, you know, the type of tree. And there are trees that, they all have different characteristics, they all have different benefits, and they all have different problems. My very first council, whatever you want to call it, community upheaval was over cottonwood trees in the park when they had eagles sitting on top of the cottonwood trees, and everybody was fearful that they weren't going to be able to hunt anymore. So we've had a series of these, and I think explaining the different types of trees and why and how they're managed, along with the messaging that you just described, would be great. And as Director Burt said once, if we had a time machine, we could go back and plant different trees. But that's not been put forward to the council for a budget item yet.
I'll put that in for next biennium. And I will say, that actually leads into kind of the next item, which I won't go into until we're done with this one. But as part of the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management Plan that we did, we, there is a tree species list and the ideal places that they would be. And so that was done cross-departmentally. And so that's a part of that storytelling, too, is those are conversations that have been had across the city to ensure that we're putting the right tree in the right place for the right purpose. And so tying all of that together is going to be really vital to bringing the community along on that work.
Perfect. Thank you.
Council, Lenny, for the questions?
I'll just acknowledging how important it is for us to look back, to just take a look out at the lessons learned. And I think that we're doing a phenomenal job of doing that, and looking back just long enough to get those lessons, and then put the eyes right back onto the future and moving forward. So thank you for you and your team for doing that. And also, the importance of storytelling and connecting. Councilmember Fields, I just want to check in, make sure that you didn't have anything else that you wanted to add, because your hand is still up?
No, I accidentally hit that button. I couldn't get it down.
And the importance of storytelling, and, you know, that we're aware that as a city, we can be doing a better job of that, and just being responsible for it and moving forward to make sure that we're, because we are doing some really great work. And for it to bring the residents and community in along with it, to say, hey, check this stuff out. This is really cool. So thank you for all of that.
Moving on to number three. Council, thank you for your flexibility and your understanding that we should have had this up for Feedback for Study Session. And bear with me as I announce the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management, oh, management, I almost had it, Management Plan Update. Sticking with us, of course, is our Director of Parks and Environmental Sustainability Director, Lorraine Hamilton. Mr. David Tuchek is going to be staying with us, as is Ms. Darcy Rayner Shepherd. And is Cameron Zapata going to be joining us back again?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Welcome back, Ms. Zapata.
So as Councilmember Nueva Camina said, this is the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management Plan Update. I asked them to come up with a shorter name, and they couldn't. So that's the name of the plan. We call it CRSVM, which isn't a whole lot shorter. I'm going to hand this off to staff to share. This is for Feedback for a Study Session. So we will be coming to the April 22nd Study Session to share about the progress that we've made, the work that we've done, and a little bit more about the path forward. So I'm going to hand this off to Darcy.
Thank you, council. In the 2324 budget cycle, a Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management Plan was developed with a consultant. And once complete, the Parks Department began implementation of that plan through the following: testing sites for naturalized meadows, incorporating climate resilient species lists for any new project designs or replacement of existing plants and trees, changing our leaf management practices, cultivating wildflower meadows and pollinator gardens, identifying areas for tree canopy and understory expansion, testing more resilient turf mixes to reduce irrigation needs long-term and have more climate resilient spaces, programming a public tree giveaway for fall of 2025, and electrification of our equipment. And a full update and presentation will be given at the April 22nd Study Session, as Director Hamilton said. Are there any questions we can answer for you?
And council, this is, questions get us ready for our study session on April 22nd. Council Vice President Forsyth will kick us off, and then we'll head over to Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. So I loved seeing this in action last year. I walk grass lawn all the time, and it was great to be able to, like, tell community members what we were doing. So I'd love to hear any feedback we've received from community about those meadow areas. And then when we transitioned into fall, how the leaf beds were staying there, and we still cleaned up around it, but we made it, made those leaves actually naturally decaying. I don't know if we have any information about pollinators overwintering. So if we leave some of those dead and decaying things, it actually helps bees and stuff have a place to winter over. So I don't know if we have any information about that. And then any information we may have on the grass median strips that we were looking to convert to wildflowers, and when we could expect that, because I'm really excited for that. Thanks.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. Really excited for this study session. So many great things in these slides to discuss. Would love, during the study session, to be able to hear a little bit more about the kind of desirable aspects of the turf mix that's being proposed for the great lawn on the municipal campus, and how that compares to existing, and considerations for the path that we're choosing on that.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Looking forward to the study session. And I appreciate the chance to hear an update about how things are going. When I previewed the slides, some of the slides were really indicative of where the good work is happening, and others were less so. So I'm on the edge of my seat to know where those pollinator gardens are going to be. So looking forward to hearing about that. And wanted to also double-click on the suggestion from the Council Vice President. I think there's a lot of interest in the work of the medians and I didn't, and wilding or converting those spaces. And I didn't see that directly called out in your update. So if you have more information you can share on the 22nd, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Well, the one that I would like to know more about, I appreciate how the city, we lead by example. We model things. We don't just talk about, hey, this is really great. Somebody should do it. We model things. And I truly appreciate that about us as a city. So do we have something to where if a resident wants to have a pollinator garden as well? Do we have communications that we can get them, direct them to, to say, this is how you cultivate a pollinator garden? For more information on leaf islands, you may have noticed that we've got these leaf islands. Well, what is a leaf island? But to continue in that communication...
But to continue in that communication with residents so that we're continuing to nurture that, that relationship and be a resource for, as we model really good things, that being inclusive and drawing them into the modeled behavior.
Okay, well, it looks like we will see you for a study session on April 22nd. Thank you. Now, hopping back over, I see that our last item is a read-only, and that is the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Update for March of 2025. And counsel, is there anything, because we have reached the end of today's agenda, is there anything else for the good of the order? Counsel Member Stewart.
Thank you so much. I realize the ESAP update is read-only, but I wanted to give a huge shout-out to Mica. Congratulations on his new role as our Sustainability Program Administrator. Always exciting to see someone within the city move into a new role to help advance one of our major initiatives. So thanks so much, Mica, for all you do.
Counsel President Kritzer.
Just a note that I think the Solarize East Side Campaign is just really exciting, and, and I am, I'm thinking that as part of agenda setting, I might see if we could do some sort of special orders of the day or some sort of thing at our business meeting to be able to do additional kind of highlighting of that for our community, just to make sure that everyone's taking up this, this opportunity as much as possible.
Counsel Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Just looking at the EV street sweeper and how there's been a month-long evaluation that's been occurring before purchasing, I'm just really interested to hear how that's going and if there could be even a written update about what we learned and what we discovered through that month-long process. I would, I would appreciate to hear that. Great.
Well, if there is nothing, oh, I do see Counsel Member Fields. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we've had, we were lucky last summer, I don't think we had those boiler days, dome heat days. But I'm wondering if there is something in your planning to prepare for how we're going to mitigate the harm to our residents in the event that we do see again. And the planet is getting hotter. I keep reading about it. If we do, in fact, hit those days where it's 114, 115 degrees in western Washington, do we have an action plan ready to go?
Ms. Jenny Liebeck has just joined us to shed some light on that. Welcome.
Thank you.
I think there's two responses, and Director Hamilton is coming to join me since her, her department is responsible for some of the kind of fast response, cooling centers stands up, stand-ups and things like that, so she can speak to that. But I will say, one thing that we are working to pilot through the East Side Climate Partnership is a box fan. This is more kind of heat and wildfire smoke, but a box fan and filter, a kind of giveaway program for some of our underserved communities. So again, not necessarily hitting on like your heat dome question, but we are trying to be responsive to some of those more emergent needs. And I'll let Director Hamilton speak to the cooling centers.
From a heat dome perspective response, as you'll recall, it was three years ago, four years ago, that we had those really boiling days. And on those days, we did open City Hall. Most of those evenings, we stayed open until 10:00 PM so that people could cool down before heading home when the sun went down. We now have the Redmond Senior and Community Center, and so similar to when the bomb cyclone hit and we opened all of our centers for people who had lost their power, we would do the same with these heat dome incidents. We would work very closely with our emergency management team and the fire department to ensure that we are providing as many services, as well as the human services team and planning and community development. At times, there are things like hotel vouchers that may be available, but during that heat dome event a few years ago, those were difficult because everyone was trying to get into hotels. And so we would work to open up as many of our facilities for as many hours as possible to ensure that we provided cooling stations, water, and other resources as we were able to do.
Appreciate that. As you noted, sort of noted that planning is essential, and I think that there are some members of our community that have ideas, so maybe now might be a time to reach out to people in, who we believe are vulnerable, senior citizens and, and other people who live in certain areas of town where they don't have the natural relief they have, their part of town is actually hotter because of the lack of vegetation. So to the extent that we can do that, I think it would be a wise thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Director Hamilton, before you go, quick question on follow-up of what Counsel Member Fields had just asked. I believe I'm the only council member that lives in an apartment in downtown. Some of the apartment buildings does not have crosswinds, and the apartments can be staggering with the lack of ventilation and that. Do we have any communications that are going out to high-density buildings where that could be an issue?
Can you clarify what type of communications you're meaning?
Any, any conversation about, you may have some residents that are impacted more than others, letting you know that we have these resources available.
Yeah, when we open cooling centers, we do push that out through social media. We push it out onto our mailing, gov-delivery e-blast, sorry, those words escaped me for a moment. And then we do, do, we do have targeted outreach as well when those things are happening. But as Counsel Member Fields noted, we can always work closely with our fire department to ensure that we're doing more targeted outreach. And I do see that Chief Shepherd is on and unmuted himself, so he perhaps would like to chime in.
Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the question. Yeah, absolutely. As Director Hamilton indicated, it is a citywide effort, and what we do is, as a fire department, we do make contact with our affected areas. So we do have a list of communities where we have a particular demographic that may be more susceptible to the heat, so we would be communicating with them. We would also coordinate to make sure that there's transportation to our cooling centers and make sure that we provide timely information. I do know that the emergency manager was looking at getting portable fans, handheld fans. I know that's not much, but it is something when we have sustained heat, so.
We lost you, Chief Shepherd. Can you repeat the last 15 seconds of what you said? We lost you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, most importantly, it is a citywide effort, but Parks and Fire, we do work together along with the rest of the city team to ensure that we're making outreach to all of our affected communities, especially the demographics that we believe that are mostly affected by sustained period of heat. And so we do have plans in place. The emergency manager would be more than happy, I'm certain, to come forward and share with the council plans that we would have in the event as we approach the, the warmer period of the year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief Shepherd.
Thank you, Director. And thank you to your staff, where it is 70 degrees and absolutely gorgeous on our false spring that we have here. Thank you, counsel, for a wonderful conversation. And seeing nothing more for the good of the order, we are adjourned.